Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right behind me.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which we stand, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first item. Oh, Mary Ann, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Durkin. Ms. Fresca. Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra, here. Ms. Towner.
Here.
Ms. Seles.
Here.
Mr. Smithing.
Before we get started with our next agenda, I would like to take a moment and to inform the board that Mr. Smithing did have a loss in his family. His father passed away over the weekend. So I do not anticipate that he'll be joining us, or if he does, it may be in and out. So Ms. Towner, the Vice President, will be running the board meeting.
Okay, any visitor's statements this evening? Anything submitted online? Dr. Skinkis.
There were no visitor's statements submitted. I'm fielding an email right now from Ms. Fresca. She's trying to find her link. So if Mike could resend her a link, that would be helpful. But there were no visitor's statements submitted to the school board email account.
Great, thank you, sorry. President's report, I have none. Superintendent's report.
Curriculum advisory scheduled for May. We'll get dates finalized here with Mary Ann and I to meet with the curriculum advisory council. Facilities advisory council will also meet in May. Just a brief update. The Ruff project did start this week due to the stay at home and schools being closed through May 30th. So they were able to get started this week. Finance advisory council met last week just to review Kristen's COVID tracking tool on the impact on both revenues and expenditures. She'll touch on that briefly tonight during her report, and then we could go into more of a discussion if need be during the discussion item part of the agenda to discuss the COVID updates. Personnel advisory council met last week to review administrative contracts. Policy advisory council met yesterday to discuss Press Packet 103, and our changes were submitted to the board agenda yesterday by Mary Ann. Purchase lease of land advisory council. There's no updates from the zoo. I did have email, short email exchange with them this week. They're working with a reduced staff, and so they asked for some additional time before we could meet again so they could address their issues with the closures and their operations. I am still meeting with our consultants. We are actually coordinating another meeting with our team hopefully later this week. So I will update the board if anything comes from that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Skinkis. Principals' report, Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to work with you all. Nice to see you, Gina, Tom, Deanna, Ramona, Bill, and my condolences to President Smithing. Nice to see you, boss, and Kristen as well. And you know what? I'm grateful, you know, to have Superintendent Skinkis, you know, as a great mentor and guide who has really helped us at the building level manage, you know, this pandemic successfully thus far. And to all the students, to all the family members, here are the things that have not been canceled. Reading, exercising, loving on one another, being good to each other, walking around the block, walking your pet, you know, playing games online. Guys, there are many things that have not been canceled, so let's focus on what we have. I'm not ignoring the severity, you know, of this crisis and how it's impacted us, but remember, guys, there are many things, like the love for life, that we can still do. I want to congratulate us to start off. You know, once again, we were named to one of the top high schools in the state of Illinois in the United States, according to the U.S. News and World Report. I want to thank Dr. Smatena, who led RB for the previous five years and continued the legacy of excellence. She really built an amazing school, and I'm fortunate and blessed to be moving it forward. So thank you, Kristen, to all the teachers, to everybody, parents, student, board member that made that possible. That is very special. I want to start this evening by addressing a question that was posed to the admin about engagement. So currently, we're using a three-tier system to track student engagement and concerns. We are right now at an 85% engagement level. Breaking down by numbers, so currently, we have about 1,350 students that are actively engaged, and we have 263 students that need help, you know, that are not engaged. But my commitment to the community and to everybody here is that we are addressing these concerns through our small teams. We are following up. We're doing phone calls, emails, well-being checks, and partnering with all the research that we have available. So we're not going to let anybody fall through the cracks. A quick message for all the students with special needs. We have an individual distance learning plan representative of their IEP. So I know that this experience, you know, has been tough for everyone, especially students with special needs. But to all the parents and all the students, we have a plan for you. And if you guys have any questions, parents and students, please feel free to reach out to your case manager. We'll make sure that you are supported. Every Friday, starting two weeks ago, April 17 through May 15, have been designated remote e-learning planning days at RB as supported by ISBE. These Fridays are regular workdays. Teachers use it to plan their lessons, to provide feedback and assignments, and to students. And for the students, it's a chance for you to make up the work and to catch up. We know this is new. We know there's a lot on your plate. So that Friday provides a space for students to do the work and for teachers to plan and to meet. I will reiterate, students are not required to attend or to participate in the e-learning days, but they are responsible for their work, so we're giving you a day to catch up. You know, imagine, it's a nice, long study hall, so you can make up your work. Senior awards have been determined, and we are still in the process of compiling the awards presentation. More information will be sent out, but we are going to do a virtual senior award ceremony. Details are to come. Per athletics, our spring state tournament series have been canceled. Summer contact days have currently been suspended, but the IHSA is open for some exhibition contests. That's according to the IHSA. Senior recognition days will be May 15 and 16. We will have a virtual presentation. We're going to be posting the student athlete, the spring senior student athlete's pictures all over the fence around our stadium, and we're working on getting a gift for them. So I think that's special, and kudos to one of my assistant principals, Brendan, and my AD, who is doing the best to acknowledge our seniors. And I'm just proud to work with you, Brendan. This is outstanding. The Class of 2020 Friday Night Light Celebration. If you haven't had a chance to see the videos or the messages, please do so. But it's a, you know, it's a moment to honor our senior. We turn on the lights. I'll say a couple of words, you know, to encourage them, and that is meaningful for them. So tune in, you know, every Friday. I will personally be there. I know it was nice to see Brendan there as well. We were practicing social distancing, of course. But tune in, guys, to see the lights, seniors turn on, and you're honored. 8:20 military time, 2020 will forever be your time. Class of 2020 graduate yard signs will occur May 1st, this Friday, and 9:00 a.m. I do have an ask of all the students and of all the parents. Please practice social distancing. Maybe you catch us putting the sign as you're mowing the lawn, walking the dog. You know, we just asked that you practice social distancing. Class of 2020 cap and gown pickup and yearbook distribution only for seniors will be May 19. Further logistics will be sent shortly. And for all the other students, for the underclass students, the yearbook distribution is still in progress. We will send you information as soon as we have all those details. And to all the students and all the parents, I know I'm throwing a lot of data and information. I will make sure to follow this up with a comprehensive calendar and email so you have all the dates written down. Graduation will be addressed a little later on in this meeting. Locker cleanout. Students, we heard your teachers. Your teachers told us they want you to have all the materials until the very end, because we're not going to quit on learning. So with that, okay, here are the following dates for locker cleanout. For the first-year student, for the freshmen, will be May, excuse me, yeah, May 25 through May 28. For the sophomores, it'll be June 1st through June 4th. For the juniors, June 8th through June 11th. And for the seniors, June 15th through June 18th. Those will be your designated dates. Further information and details are forthcoming. Summer programming, right now, is currently on hold until further notice. Students and families, we know this has been a tough time, and we may need some support, counseling, some service, just a shoulder, just someone to hear us. So, but guys, remember this. Our counselors are still available. Email them. I send the directory to everybody. And if for some reason you're not successful in reaching out to them, reach out to me, and we will connect you. That's our job as administrators, to connect you to their resources. But trust me, our counseling team, our student services team, is very responsive. And if for some reason we have an emergency and we're not reached, you know, remember, students, we have the text-to-talk app. Okay, text to talk to the number 844-670-5838. Next week, I'm giving this a little early, but I'm excited. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I'm grateful to all the teachers. And guys, let's say it, but if you know, if you know anybody in your life who has taught you something that has helped you move forward, thank them, okay? And we'll do all the celebrations next week. Again, Teacher Appreciation Week is May 4th through May 8th. This is census year 2020. Make sure you do your census so we get all of our resources. It only takes 10 minutes, guys. Please complete your census. The next principal-student advisory forum meeting will be on Friday, May 8th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. The next RB family reunion for alumni and current students will be on Thursday, May 14th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Guys, last Friday, I had the first family reunion, as I called it, and it was a sight to see. We had alumni from 49, 59, 63, 85 alumni right now from 2020 and future students. And they told us some amazing stories, how RB made a positive difference in their lives. I'm going to do these family reunions maybe two or three more times before we conclude, but please join us. If you're an RB alum, look out for my emails. Join us, stay as long as you can. I understand you guys have families and needs, but join us. It'd be nice to see, you know. The students loved hearing how RB was 50 years ago. But one thing that hasn't changed is the quality of the experience they receive at our school. And the Last Coffee with the Principal will be held Thursday, May 18th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. Further details are to come, and that is my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. It was a lot. We have Coach Curtin. You are going to give us the winter athletic report.
I am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to report tonight on a summary of the athletic season from the winter season, as well as touching on the participation numbers. We experienced a terrific winter athletic season. Our girls' basketball team registered 30 victories, which was a school victory or a school record, if you will. They also won a regional championship, won the conference title. Brenna Loftus was named All-State. Coach Till was also recognized as the Illinois High School Basketball Coaches Association Coach of the Year candidate. So special season for girls' basketball. Cheer also won a conference title, and they made it downstate for the second year in a row. Gymnastics, their participation has increased by almost 30%. They were, took first place again in the Bulldog Invitational. They had three participants made it to their, to the sectionals, qualified for sectional, and they finished third place in their regional. The Palms team took fifth in conference. The Palms team had 14 academic all-conference athletes. They graduated quite a few girls last year, and still a great season. They ended up taking fifth in the conference. Boys' basketball tied for first in the conference once again. They were also the regional champs. Paul Zalingskis took All-State, so another fine season by our boys' basketball program, which was a young team heading into the season as well. Boys' swim and dive, they ended up taking fourth in conference, seventh in the sectional, and sophomore Harrison Nolan ended up taking second in state in the state diving competition. A great season for Harrison, and we have him for two more years. So we're really excited about Harrison's future, as well as the swim and dive future for the program. And wrestling ended up taking second in the conference. They were regional champions. They had two state qualifiers in Quentin Godluskis and Mateo Castello. And I think the best culminating feat for the wrestling program is they made it down to the dual-state tournament, first time in school history. They basically made it to the final four for a team competition. That's a competition that started probably around the mid-'90s, so certainly an impressive feat for our wrestling program. Switching gears for a moment into the participation numbers. We had 254 winter participants. That was up four from last year. This is the most participants we've had since 2015, 2016. We saw an increase in cheer, gymnastics, palms, boys' basketball, and wrestling. We saw a decline in girls' basketball and boys' swimming. I think the decline in girls' basketball is just a little bit of a trend. There's a little bit of a downtick in terms of girls' level of interest in playing basketball this year. Boys' swimming, and talking to Coach Graham Rizley, from what I've gathered, we had a number of kids in our feeder program, if you will, in the Bullet Academy program that elected to attend a private school this year. A handful of kids from Brookfield and Riverside. We graduated two swimmers this year, the Class of 2020, and graduated approximately nine swimmers last year. All reports indicate that we should see a spike in participation this year. I know this is the most activity we've seen at the swim and dive table at the We are RB Future Bulldog Night. So I know, you know, I think their arrow is pointing up in terms of the level of swimmers they have coming in, and hopefully they're able to recruit the hallways a little bit more and drive those numbers up a little bit more heading into the next season. In closing, I'd like to share two items with you. One, we created a new initiative this year. It was a Google survey. And basically, at the conclusion of every season, athletes and the parents of those athletes were able to provide feedback on the experience that they had for that season. It's been extremely beneficial in providing feedback so we can kind of identify some of the strengths that we have within each program and some of the areas for improvement. And that is information that I share with our principal and I share with our head coaches. And that's, you know, pretty much it. And I think if you ask the head coach, they would find that information beneficial. Again, that's a new initiative, and it's proved to be very helpful. In closing, I would just like to say, you know, we had a tremendous fall season and a really good winter season. I think the spring season was projected to exceed what we were able to accomplish the last two seasons, which I think, you know, makes it all the more challenging for our spring athletes. But I just felt like there was a vibe around the high school as we prepared for the spring season that they were going to kind of build off this momentum. And a lot of our sports had a lot of returning seniors. Obviously, girls' softball comes to mind with the season they had last year, as well as boys' baseball, but it doesn't stop there. There were so many other sports in our spring season where their arrow is pointing up. And we're going to do our best to recognize those athletes in the weeks to come. We have some special things planned for our spring senior athletes, as Hector mentioned earlier in the meeting. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Brendan, before board members start to raise their hand, why don't you touch on real quick, I know Hector laid it out a little bit, but I could provide a little more detail. You're trying to do a couple special events for the seniors because it won't have the traditional senior night.
Sure.
And you're also doing, what, a virtual college commitment celebration? If you touch on a couple of those items, that'd be helpful.
Correct. As of now, we have identified May 15th and May 16th as our senior recognition days. And what that's going to entail, obviously, I've coordinated this event with our assistant athletic directors, our head coaches, our booster club, my administrative assistant, Donna Sifferman. So there's a lot of people helping out with this project and all that's going into it. We intend to hang banners around the stadium. A headshot of each athlete grouped by their sport, as well as a larger banner that recognizes our senior spring athletes. We will roll every student's name, every senior student's name on the digital marquee board. So if a family wants to stop by and take a walk and take a picture, I think it'd be pretty neat to see their name and bright lights with their sport underneath it, as well as walk over to Canelli Athletic Complex and take a picture. And I think that'll be pretty neat. Some of the other things we're going to do, we're going to recognize our senior athletes with a, it's called a challenge coin. You might have seen them with some of our police forces and military forces. It's a challenge coin, and it'll kind of recognize our senior athletes. It'll be a memento to remember what a challenging season it's been and just let them know that we're thinking about them and we support them in all that they do. We will also attempt to increase our social media, if you will, in terms of recognizing each team, as well as each senior athlete. Obviously, you're sensing a theme here where we're kind of driving towards recognizing these senior athletes. Obviously, it's extremely challenging to have your senior year cut short. And we will also be recognizing 22 senior athletes that intend to extend their athletic career at the college level. And that will be comprised of a virtual video, basically, rolling that out where each student will have the opportunity to thank those that had an impact on their athletic and academic development.
That's great, Brendan. Thank you. Any questions from the board before we let Brendan sign out?
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work, hard work, Brendan. I know that it's obviously been challenging to keep everything together while everyone is remote. And I wanted to give a shout out to Doug Schultz today, Coach Schultz of the softball team. Today, I was walking my dogs, and he was delivering some fundraising items and some other items to his players, using the minibus and, you know, kind of standing at the parkway. The items were tossable, so, you know, he had contacted the girls to come to the door and, you know, throwing the items, and they were happy to see him. And so that was really nice to see. He's like, you know, I zoom, I talked to him for a second. He said, "I zoom with them," but, you know, it's great to get out and actually see them. And I think that people, all teachers feel that, all teachers, coaches feel that way, right? Like, if we can actually see them, it's even better than just the, all the virtual or the reminds or the emails or the school-age posts and all those things. So congratulations to your coaches who are really trying to stay connected to their athletes.
Thank you for the kind words, Ramona, and thank you for sharing that story. Yes, there is a lot of camaraderie amongst that softball team and within all of our spring teams, but a very special senior group, no question. Thank you.
Brendan, we have a discussion here coming up about COVID-19 and our plan and information. So one of the things that I have written down here is we decided as an administrative team we'll put notification out to families about our youth summer camps around the week of May 15 that they will be canceled. We wanted to give the governor at least two weeks in May where he would have an opportunity to see if there was any changes in the stay-at-home or the restrictions at the large group gatherings. But we will get that information out to families. They were scheduled to start June 8, correct?
That is correct. And we did decide on a May 15 deadline. Again, this is for youth camps, obviously, eighth grade and younger. We will revisit the high school-aged camps, perhaps at a later date in the month of May or even possibly June, but right now, the deadline for youth camps is May 15.
Okay, so that's our communication deadline, and I'll make sure I touch on that again later tonight. Thank you, Brendan. Anybody else have a question for Brendan? I don't see any hands up. Okay, Brendan, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you, Brendan. Have a good night.
Thank you. Start. Next up, we have the Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Savannah?
Thank you. The attached reports will provide the board with financial information through March 31st. This represents 75% of the fiscal year. So keep in mind, COVID-19 impacted us financially only one week during March due to spring break the last week in March. So I'll briefly touch on the financial impact of COVID-19 after presenting the March information, and you will also see and hear more information at the coming board meetings. So my report begins on Board Book Page 10, the monthly summary report. The total revenue for the month was $11,576,701, with 96% of that coming from property taxes. That was our spring property tax collection, and 2% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. The total expenditures for the month were $2,128,528, with 79% of that expenditure going towards salary and benefits and 6% going towards special education tuition. On Board Book Page 11 are the monthly financial statements. Year-to-date, in the operating fund, the district has received a little over $24 million and expended a little over $20 million. This surplus will be continued to spend down for the remainder of the year as the district will not receive significant revenue outside of a little bit of interest income for the remainder of the fiscal year. On the next page, the summary of revenues shows that the district has received 92% of our revenue in the operating funds for this year. This amount is the same as last fiscal year at this time. The summary of expenditures on the following page shows the district has spent 75% of the budgeted expenditures for the year in the operating accounts, and this amount is also the same as last fiscal year at this time. What's not the same as last fiscal year at this time is COVID-19. And so you'll see some of that impact in my report next month, but we will see some impact this year. So while we have already collected a majority of our biggest source of revenue, which is property tax, we will be losing revenue in registration fees, food service, rentals, and vending machines are some of the big ones. On the expenditure side, we will have some savings in some areas, such as substitute transportation for both special education and athletics, utilities, as we are not running the building to the full capacity, as well as athletics. However, we do also have some increased expenditures in things such as food service and possibly summer school, as well as could possibly be some graduation costs as well. So right now, I think it's hard to estimate exactly where we're going to come in for the year. I think a lot of it will depend on whether or not we get any additional revenue that we are due. Some of that revenue is federal grant reimbursement and continued state payments. There's talks as to whether or not those will continue primarily in some of the state grants. If we don't get those, we will have an even bigger deficit than we initially projected. If we do get some of those, we will finish closer to our budget. So we'll have a better picture next month as to where we will be. There was a question submitted about next year. Next year, we will see a bigger financial impact due to COVID-19. Property tax collection rates will most likely decrease, and appeals will most likely increase. Typically, that's a long drawn-out process, but I do think, you know, next year, there will be a bigger financial impact, especially in some of the revenues at the state level. Next in my report, on Board Book Page 14, is our third-quarter rental report. For the third quarter, you'll see that the district collected $22,737 in revenue and expended $7,823. At this time last year, the district collected a little over $14,000 in revenue, so we're currently tracking a little higher than the prior year up until COVID-19 hit. Of the revenue from this quarter, 53% of it came from facility charges, with the majority of rentals in the field house followed by the wrestling room. Year-to-date, the district has collected Year-to-date, the district has collected $69,678 and has expended $20,414. This surplus from rentals is used to offset costs related to the upkeep of facilities. And again, this was tracking somewhat similar to where we were the previous year. Currently, we're conducting a thorough review of rental rates by comparing our rental rates to other schools. And we will be sharing that with the Facilities Advisory Council in May. There were also two questions submitted about the rental report. The first question was about fourth quarter rentals. So yes, we should assume that we will not have any fourth quarter rentals or summer rentals as this is the worst-case scenario and kind of where we anticipate us being right now. So between no additional revenue and some refunds that we need to issue, we anticipate being about $30,000 under budget on the revenue side for rentals. The second question that was submitted was in regards to the snow and salt surcharge, which is on Board Book Page 17. We put a flat amount on each rental during the winter so that if we need to plow for a specific event, we have some money to offset the cost. And we add this cost to all winter rentals so that one group doesn't have to pay the entire cost. Additional reports that are included in my summary, which I will not go over in detail, that are included every month are the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures Report for the month of March, which is on Board Book Page 19. And then on Board Book Page 30 begins the Student Activity Account Summary Report for the month of March for the board's information. And that concludes my Assistant Superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Smithana. That was awesome. I would just like to point out very briefly that this is the ultimate rainy day, right? Like, we are involved in the ultimate rainy day. And projections do not look favorable for public entities, municipalities, schools. Earlier this school year, earlier this fiscal year, we took a real hit in this room and on social media for having a large fund balance. And this is the very reason why we have kept a large fund balance. So we hopefully, fingers crossed, are prepared for the future. I think we're set up fairly well. We don't want to have to dip into that fund balance, but we don't have a crystal ball, right? So I just wanted to note that at this time, we optimistically look forward to a good future. We'll see what happens. The next item on the agenda is any discussion items. This is item six on the agenda. If you have any items for me, then we would come back around to them at number 10 on the agenda, item number 10. So is there any one of my fellow board members that has a discussion item that they would like me to put down? No? Okay. So our next discussion item is the RBHS COVID-19 information and plan.
Thank you, Ramona. So I have headphones in and we have a couple of people in the room. So I know I got some feedback from a couple of you that I'm muffled. So I'm trying to keep my tone low so we don't get feedback on the computers next door. So if you need to give me a sign or chime in here for me to speak up or slow down, just let me know. Lot to discuss tonight. I think Hector touched on a few things, Brendan touched on a few things. I think it's important for anybody watching or anybody that will watch this at a later date, the administration is doing everything they can to work with the instructional coaches, athletic and activity sponsors to try to come up with virtual activities, way to recognize kids, way to recognize our senior class, ways to get through this together as an RB family. And I know that if there's any staff in the country that could get through this together, we'll be the Bulldogs, and I have no concerns with that. We can't determine how this will shake out, but we can have an impact on how we will respond. And we have been in front of this and we're doing the best we can. And I want to thank everybody for their patience and their hard work. I have a few bullet points that I will go in order to discuss. And then we can open that to discussion or any additional questions. Governor Pritzker, the governor obviously announced last week that the stay-at-home order will be extended through May 30th. He also provided some additional guidance that was sent out yesterday. And we're still unpacking a four-page document that we got today in regards to state graduation requirements for seniors in the state required credit. So more information on that will go out to the Board of Education on Friday in our Friday update. We have a couple of meetings set up with instructional coaches. Dr. Freitas, myself, Kylie Beth, some of the administrators are meeting tomorrow. So we need to unpack that document and that language. I don't think those changes will significantly impact RB or our e-learning model. It supports the grading model that we already have in place about allowing students to improve their grade from third quarter. You heard tonight from Dr. Freitas. We are currently in our sixth week of e-learning. We're averaging about an 85% engagement level. So we need parents and students to continue to engage, log in, hand in assignments. This is obviously a very unique time, but this is a time as a student to where you can really have self-control over the outcomes and your learning outcomes. And I understand that this afternoon, I have two children of my own. It was a 70-degree day and sunny. My kids were not very focused on their e-learning, so we had to take several breaks to go outside, get some fresh air, ride their bikes, do things like that. There's no reason why you can't do that and still put in some work each day to hand something in to your teacher, to check in with a teacher, to follow up on an assignment you're missing. So continue to please log in, parents. Please continue to check Skyword and look for teacher updates. Again, as Dr. Freitas mentioned, we have a couple of things now in place so that we're monitoring student engagement and check-in level. And the counselors, the social workers, the administrators, we're making calls to individual students that haven't logged in or haven't submitted things. So if you feel that you're not getting the support you need, please reach out to Dr. Freitas or myself and we'll make sure someone reaches back out to you to help your student be successful during remote learning and e-learning. Student meals, we're continuing with our plan. This is another thing that I would encourage families. As each of us are impacted differently through this crisis, if your financial situation changes or maybe your business does reopen and you need to go to work and you need to have lunch service for your high school student, all you have to do is please contact Ms. Smithana in the business office. We will put you on the list and your student can come pick up a lunch on Monday for Monday and Tuesday and on Wednesday for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. If there's a significant problem and they need their lunch delivered, we also have that. We also have some lunches being delivered for families that can't make it up to the high school. So please, parents, if you're dealing with any of this, this is one thing you don't have to worry about. If you want to make sure your kids can have a lunch, we can provide that for you. End-of-the-year events. I think a lot of that was touched on by Dr. Freitas in regards to the senior awards being virtual. Local scholarship night will be virtual. We're still working on how they're going to do an Apollo Awards for our fine arts department, our music students. NHS induction will happen next fall. Obviously, prom was canceled. In the event, if the governor was to raise the restrictions on large group gatherings and we could pull off a local prom or some type of senior picnic, we will do something like that. But we can't, that is out of our control, obviously. The restrictions will come down from the governor and the Illinois Department of Public Health. And we would need to have the ability to have 500-plus people together to do something like that. So we just have to continue to watch for those updates. Dr. Freitas touched on cap and gown for seniors. Pickup is May 19th. Your book is, distribution for seniors is May 19th. Brendan talked about doing the college commitment ceremony online. More information will come out from the athletic department and the spring athletics senior night. I want to congratulate the students and community members. We have not had any concerns from the local police department in the last two weeks since I gave my last update about people using the track in the stadium facility in a responsible manner. So thank you for following those rules. Also, thank you to the Brookfield Police Department for helping us monitor that. I do want to touch on Stadium Lights 2020. You know, Dr. Freitas is doing something nice. I know Coach Curtin was out there last week. They put the 2020 on the scoreboard and they had the fights on plan and the lights are there. And I know last Friday was supposed to be prom. So I'm assuming that's why a lot of students came out to see the lights on. That being said, this is a celebration to recognize. And if you want to drive by and beep your horn or drive down Rockefeller so you could get a picture of the scoreboard, beep your horn, turn around and head back on your way, that's fine. This is not an opportunity to do a large group gathering. This is not an opportunity for tailgating. So I just want to make that clear. The police department asked that I relay that message. I know we had several students out last week. The weather was nice. And again, I know it was supposed to be prom, so I'm thinking that's why a large group of seniors came out. We don't have a problem with you driving by or taking a picture through the fence, but it's not an opportunity to host a large gathering. So please, don't ruin this so that the police department and the high school have to turn off the lights and not allow this to continue. So please be responsible. And I think that's all I need to say on that. I know you guys will do that for us. I'm going to skip graduation. We can save that for the end. Summer school. Summer school is slated to start June 1st. Information will be disseminated to current high school students by May 4th. The administration will make a decision and send out information about summer school on May 4th. I would anticipate that that would be a virtual summer school until some of these restrictions are lifted from the governor. But there's a good chance that summer school will be virtual. What we are working on is trying to establish so that it is a little different from e-learning in that the staff will be required to do a Zoom every day with that summer school course so that those students needing to make up a class or had trouble with a class will have an opportunity to log in daily with their teacher. So we're just working on some of the logistics and that will be coming out May 4th. Summer camps, as Brendan mentioned previous, youth summer camps were slated to begin June 8th. The administration will get communication out by May 15th on the status of summer camps. I will also include in that communication an update to all of our local park districts. I know North Riverside, Riverside, and Brookfield's summer camps. We do an intergovernmental agreement where they use our swimming pool one day a week for the summer camps. I will have more information on that if that will be canceled or not. So I will release that around May 15th as well. Residency is scheduled to begin in July. I think it's either the 16th or the 18th. We are uncertain at this time. Again, we have to wait for information to determine if we're going to be moving that online and how will we be checking residency for returning and new students. I know that some parents would like to make their appointments and schedule their summer activities around residency time so they get that taken care of. You have to just be patient with us. We don't want to, the board, in our conversations with myself and the board, we don't want to put information out and then constantly be changing direction or having to change expectations based on the governor's updates. So I'm trying to relay this information in sync with how the governor is putting out his updates. And that's why you notice everything's kind of coming in two weeks or one month ahead. So I'm just going to let you know that we'll get something out early June, first week of June, about how we'll be proceeding with residency. And then in regards to the first day of school, we've had some parents email us with what we are anticipating with the start of school. Teachers are to report August 13th and 14th, and students are to report August 17th. I don't, I would say, assume the business as usual for right now in regards to August until we get further direction from the governor and the State Board of Education and the Department of Public Health. All the news articles that you're reading or the newscast or things you're watching online are the same things that board and myself and my administrators are watching and reading, the same things. We understand that colleges and universities are still contemplating whether or not they'll be opening in the fall. I can assure you that I'm doing weekly conference calls with the Superintendent Association, with West 40 and our Regional Office of Education. We even have a separate group with high school superintendents that are meeting to discuss graduation and start of next school year and fall athletics. And I can assure you, plenty of planning and discussions are taking place. But I do not want to communicate information that will be changed or canceled or have to be redirected. So we're trying to sync this up again as updates come out from the state and federal level at that point. We're kind of, we're preparing for two or three different scenarios in August that school will be open as usual, that there may be an e-learning period again at some point in time in the fall or in the winter. Should flu season and COVID season somehow hit together, which some experts are predicting. And we're also looking at alternative schedules. So we're working on multiple plans and all that will be disseminated accordingly as more updates come out from the State Board of Education and the government. I'd like to circle back to graduation. I receive regular communication from parents, you know, one, thanking all the staff and for all the things we're doing and for trying to communicate and stay on top of this the best we can. Thank you for those emails. They help us to get through these tough times. I also received several emails and messages, and I'm sure Dr. Freitas does too, with people asking about senior events or graduation or look at what this school is doing, look at what that school is doing. Dr. Freitas touched on it in his report. We are doing some things. As he said, we have about 50 teachers and administrators going out this Friday and each of us have a handful of students who are going to seniors' houses to deliver their class of 20-20 yard sign. We're working on getting photos to put out. Brendan's doing the senior spring athletes' photos along the fence. We're working on doing something for all seniors on the front lawn, in front of the school. We're planning multiple things, multiple options to figure out what we can do with graduation. So I just, again, need your patience and we'll communicate this accordingly. Our main priority is to have that culminating event, that capstone event for seniors. And that priority is graduation. And we sent out a survey at the end of last week to our students. As of yesterday, we had 160 students respond. And a majority of the responses, well over a majority of those responses from the students, from the seniors, were that they wanted some type of in-person graduation. I completely understand that. You want to have a final opportunity with your classmates to celebrate your four years of success and all of your experiences, and we will try to provide that for you. But there are a couple of things at play. Number one, we cannot conduct an in-person event until the governor comes out and lifts the restrictions of large group gatherings. In order for us to do any type of in-person graduation ceremony, even if it was a condensed ceremony or something at the stadium or a large venue, the governor would have to lift the restrictions so that we could have a gathering greater of 1,000-plus. We have 400 graduates. Even if we limited each graduate to two tickets, that would be an additional 800 spectators. That would be 1,200, and that's not counting administration or faculty. So we would need the governor to lift the large group restrictions of 1,000-plus. What I would say to the board tonight, and I'm looking forward to our discussion that will follow these comments, is as the administration, we're trying to figure out two options. One option so that there is some type of recognition of the seniors in a graduation in their cap and gown, whether that's a drive-up graduation where, you know, the student can, parents can make an appointment, we'll have a temporary stage set up, the student can come. There'll be some administrators or someone in their cap and gowns so that the student can walk across the stage, get their diploma, we'll take professional photos. We're considering doing something like that. We've looked into a drive-up graduation. We're meeting with someone at the Rosemont All-State Arena with a couple of other high schools to see if there's an option of doing a drive-up graduation. But again, that wouldn't be on our campus. That wouldn't be kind of like that culminating event on RB's campus. We've talked about doing a virtual graduation so that... We've talked about doing a virtual graduation so that the students have something virtual toward the end of the month. And then, should the restrictions be lifted at some point in June, maybe we can do a condensed brief ceremony in the stadium. So, these are some of the things we're discussing and we're trying to include the feedback we received from the seniors and the emails we're receiving from parents. But some of this is out of our control. And it is tough as an administration when we're trying to plan for something that we don't know when that time will come or when that date will come. And so, the one thing that I would encourage the board to discuss tonight and to get their thoughts on was if we are going to do an alternative graduation date in the month of June, we have to identify that June 30th would be our last option for that. And I know some other schools have put out dates in July or in August. But with RB, I think it would be important for us to bring some closure to this before June 30th. And if the restrictions aren't lifted before June 30th, that's why we want to have this other option or something take place before then. So, the students had something. And so that if these restrictions are not lifted, they're not just getting a diploma in the mail. And the reason I'm saying we would like to have something done before June 30th because obviously the Fourth of July holiday, people have plans, travel, who knows what the restrictions will still be at that time. But also, we start, we're slated to start residency, like I said, the week of July 16th. And our first day at school is August 13th. So, I need that month for the administration, the teachers to figure out, you know, to get prepared for the 2021 school year as well as in the event that we're having to make changes for the opening of schools, should that not look the same as usual. We will need some time for that plan to occur as well and for that communication to occur to families. So, with that being said, I'd like to open the discussion for the board. I do have one other thing in regards to graduation. We did pull information from multiple large venues. And, you know, the Rosemont Theater probably sounded like the best if we were going to do a large venue off-site so that people could social distance. That would be approximately $28,000 to pull off an event at the Rosemont Theater. That includes all setup charges, workers, et cetera. But even when we contacted them, the first thing they said is they can hold the date for us, but unless the governor lifts the restrictions of 1,000, gatherings of 1,000 plus, they would not be able to host our event. So, again, a lot of this comes back down to if the governor were to lift those restrictions, we could probably pull off a condensed ceremony in the stadium and have a date for an alternative that be arranged. But this would all need to occur before June 30th. That's my recommendation. So, if you want to raise your hand and then we can click on you and you can go for your feedback from there. But if you have any other questions, I covered a lot. So, I'm sorry. I had to go through my list.
Thank you, Dr. Skikis. That was, that was great. Ms. Horuska, you have your hand up? Unmute. Un-
Hold on.
You're good. No, you're not. You were, I thought. Okay, now you're good.
All right. Have we reached out to our state representative and asked if there is discussion in Springfield for any kind of concessions regarding a graduation, particularly if they're in a controlled situation like the Rosemont, you know, theater where people couldn't just come out of the stands and congregate, you know, you're in a chair? Do we know if they are discussing some kind of alternative event?
Today on the webinar with the State Board of Education, they came out specifically and said that you should be planning a virtual or alternative graduation ceremony because they do not anticipate large group gatherings to be allowed. They said for sure through May 30th. So, I don't think there's any discussion of whether or not, making exceptions. They were very direct and they actually put it in writing that being on a stay-at-home order until May 30th, school districts at eighth grade, for eighth grade and 12th grade graduations should be planning alternate or virtual ceremonies.
But I think one of our issues with the virtual also was having the students come to the school to wait. Does that count as having the large group? Even if we have the students spread out, you know, waiting in a classroom so they can walk across the stage? I mean, are we running into trouble there just getting our students together so we don't have to do this over a month?
That's what we're planning still with the administration. That's why there's been no formal communication about that. We were thinking about doing that in almost like residency appointment time so that we would have kids being able to be spaced out in the cafeteria and control, having a control on the amount of people we're allowing in so that we do not exceed any large group gatherings or group of 10. So, that's why we're still working on some of the logistics of that to see if that's even going to be manageable. We would anticipate if we did something like that, that that would be, need to run over a few days. But what we were trying, you know, one of the things we discussed, because we looked at the drive-up graduation and we're still going to attend that meeting with some of the other high schools in the event that they could pull up a drive-up graduation. But we talked about even doing one between our parking lot and the zoo parking lot or using the mall parking lot. And the logistics about the sound, the video. And then there was concerns about the police that that would still be considered a large group gathering even though people were in cars. And so, we're working through some of this right now, Laura. These are, we're in the very early stages. The message I wanted to get out to families tonight was that we're trying to come up with two options. Obviously, one being a later date in June so that should the restrictions be lifted, we could do some type of ceremony on our stadium, in our stadium. We think that would work better this year than being inside just for this year. And then figuring out a second option so that at least parents can get some type, and if the event that can happen, parents and the student can exchange some brief experience of their student crossing a stage in their cap and gown and have a diploma cover in their hand and getting that professional picture. And maybe the district would pay for that professional picture. And we understand that might be a big commitment from the administration and maybe board members could sign up for time slots. We would have to make sure we set this up so no one's shaking hands or, but at least it would be the closest thing possible to what resembles crossing that stage.
I would just like to say to all the families out there that have inquired, those that haven't, that have just been wondering, because thank you, Dr. Skikis, again, for all that information. This board, this administration, this teaching staff and everyone in this organization that, that is a part of it, and I'm going to, I promised myself I wouldn't cry, but knows that this, you know, this is the way that we recognize this milestone in kids' lives. And it weighs heavy on all of us. I know I speak for the teachers when I say that. And we don't want it to be this way, but the governor and ISB is where we take our cues from. And I can't have someone getting sick. I can't have the news headline be that someone got sick because of a large gathering because RB needed to have this, this, the graduation, the traditional way. And so, we, we're, you know, the administration is doing the best that they can with the information that they have for the health and safety of all of our students. That comes first, the safety of our community. And as you can tell from what Dr. Skikis said, we're trying to work it all out. I'm sorry.
Deanna, you had your hand up. Do you want to jump in here?
Sure. No, I just think what's important is that, Dr. Skinkis, you're giving some parameters for everyone to operate on. And those are the uncertainty. It's what's so, so challenging right now. And so, I think the really important things that Dr. Freitas and Dr. Skinkis laid out and will come out in future communications are going to be when decisions will be made and when they'll be communicated to seniors in their classes. Nothing is decided today. You can't decide everything today. And I respect that and I understand it. It's a lot of vetting of potentialities. And so, patience is the key word here. And it's frustrating. It's, it's, it makes us angry. It makes us all kinds of things. But all we can do is keep communicating. So, thank you both for your very extensive comments. And Ramona, thank you for your thoughtful words as well. I think you definitely are speaking for all of us on this.
Did anybody else want to chime in on graduation? Thank you, Deanna. Is the board comfortable with the, with the, that we would need to do something to recognize the seniors by June 30th and that way that would serve as our cutoff date for an alternative date? Does that suffice with the majority of the board?
Straw poll. If anyone shows hands, June 30th?
Thumbs up if that's okay with you?
Yeah. June 30th, it's good.
Okay. So, we will work on trying to come up with two options for the students so that we'll set an alternative date for sometime in June. And if those restrictions are not lifted, either we'll have had some type of virtual or drive-up something, you know, something prior to that so that we're not just mailing diplomas home. We will continue to work on that as an administration. Is there any other questions in regard to anything else I touched on tonight from the COVID part? Okay, no show of hands. The last other discussion item then was student advisory. Student advisor to the Board of Education, just wanted to give you a brief update. An email was sent out at the beginning of this week. It'll be sent out again Wednesday. The six finalists have kind of put together a card that summarizes three key facts at their address. If they were selected to be an advisor to the Board of Education, that was sent out to all freshmen, sophomores and juniors for them to select their top four candidates. Once we receive that data, those top four candidates will then have an interview with myself, Dr. Freitas, and two board members, two board members to be decided. And the goal is still to try to bring a candidate to the May committee of the whole meeting for formal approval. And then the student advisor to the board would start at the August board meeting.
Well, that is some good news. Thank you. Old Business, Life Safety Capital Improvement.
As I touched on earlier, the roof project and HVAC project for the gymnastics room started this week. And so, that is about three or four weeks ahead of schedule. And so, we're hoping that it will obviously conclude in July and so that we will have no construction ongoing during the start of school in August.
Press Plus Policy Issue 103.
Yes. Mike, if you can go to, if you could share your screen on the Press Plus. This is a short packet. So, I think Mary Ann sent out some of my notes. Keep going, Mike. I did not receive any questions except I did, I shouldn't say that. I received one request for a document and I will work on getting that board member our engagement letter with Franck. Franck has been our attorney since prior to my arrival. We only vetted a new legal counsel that handled two collective negotiations for us, the 2013 contract and 2016 contract. And they strictly handle negotiations. And Franck was the board attorney. So, when the next time Mary Ann's in the office, we need to go through some of the file cabinets to find our original engagement letter with Franck. But I will provide that to the board member that requested that. As you can see, there were not a lot of changes to what ISBA is recommending in these Press Plus packet. All the policies that are marked with and approved means the advisory council agreed with the recommendations provided by ISB. There were one or two policies that had a question at the end. Our answer was highlighted in yellow. That was shared yesterday. I don't think there were any issues or anything of substantive change that needs to be discussed or vetted. And I did not receive any questions. So, my thought would be unless there's discussion on something tonight that lets you digest our changes for another two weeks and then we can put this on the consent agenda for the first meeting in May, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
That sounds great, Dr. Skinkis. Okay, registration fees for 2021.
I'll let Kristen discuss this. Mike, if you can, you can click on this.
Begins on board book page 78.
Maybe Mike, if you can move the other people in the room so that I can see that. So, Kristen will just, Kristen will discuss this shortly. We did look at both activities and athletics. Kristen will provide that summary. But we were unable to come up with a cap system just because so many students sign up for different things. And a lot of our student fees really start to spike with driver's ed and AP testing that it would be difficult to try to establish a cap or a cutoff line for all fees. But Kristen was able to culminate, pull together the data in regards to activities and athletics. And I'll let her provide the presentation on that.
So, I believe on board book page 80, I provided an additional chart. And this chart outlines that we had 77 students this year that are currently participating in three or more competitive activities, performance-based activities or sports. And that generates $7,700 for the district. So, should the board choose to adopt a cap of $350 to participate in activities, the district would lose $7,700 for the district. Other than that, not any, all of the information that I presented, the previous chart remains the same. So, the administration's recommendation is if we were looking to institute some sort of cap or waive fees after a certain amount. Operationally, it would be easy to have a cap for each student at $350. And we, we have a certain number, at least for this year, of how much revenue we would lose for the district.
And that cap would be for the athletics and activities, correct? If any of the board members want to raise their hand if they have any question or input?
Well, if- Sorry. If there is none, then I can read the motion. The Board of Education Township High School, Tulane County, Illinois approves the registration fees for the 2020, 2021 school year and a cap of $350 per student for the payment, for the, excuse me, for the pay to participate fees as presented in the April 28, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. I need a second.
Seconded by Gina Sierra. Mary Ann, can you please take the vote? This is a money vote. So, it would have to be individual.
Ms. Horuska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. And thank you for all doing all the permutations on this. It's appreciated.
So, the item carries. Thank you, everyone. Life Photography Contract Extension.
The only change that I added since last board meeting is I provided the board some additional information about VIP's proposal and the administration's concern with VIP. As a result-
As a result, we would be recommending that we continue our photography services with Life Touch. They've done a great job for us. So we would be looking for a contract extension with them. Legal counsel has reviewed the contract, and this is the second read.
I don't see any hands up. If anybody has any discussion, please raise your hand. We can call you. Okay, we need a motion then in a second, please.
Okay, I can read the motion. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the three-year contract extension with Life Touch as presented in the April 28, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Second?
Second.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Okay, great. The motion carries. New business, pickup truck.
Kristen provided a nice summary here for the board, and I don't think we received any questions. Well, we did have one comment. It was between the bills and the rental, or the pickup truck in regards to snowplow. I'll let Kristen address that. Our current pickup truck is 15 years old, and we have gotten more than enough use out of it. It's kind of getting towards its last leg, and it does not have the capacity to plow. And so what we are trying to do is, we went through the state purchasing program, and if we had a new pickup truck, we would also have the ability to plow and get the plow package on it. Because right now, we pay a contracted service to do plowing, so that happens either before school or after school when the parking lot's empty. So whenever we get snow or need to plow between the aisles or do some additional plowing in the lots around Rockefeller, that cannot occur. And so that's why we're also asking, that's why you see included in the proposal to do the plow package. Kristen, am I missing anything? Or is there anything else you would like to touch on?
I would just like to add, in any given year, we could spend, if it's a really light winter with hardly any snow, we may only spend $2,000, $3,000 on plowing. But on a heavy winter with lots of snow, we pay close to $10,000 for plowing. And that isn't, you know, being able to plow as much as we'd like because we have to pay every time they come out. So I do think that by purchasing this truck, it would pay for itself rather quickly.
This is a first read. And again, Kristen, just want to touch on the state purchasing process we went through. We went through the cooperative, correct?
Correct. We went through the suburban purchasing cooperative, which satisfies the district's bidding requirement.
So what I would say, similar to the package, and the other items, we'll put this on the consent agenda, and this way gives you another two weeks to digest the information and see if you have any other questions. And if not, we'll put this on the consent agenda, if that's okay with everybody.
Great. Okay, matters for closed session. Our personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Seeing as we had no visitor's statement, item nine, we don't need to go through again. Item 10, no discussion items requested. Do any of my fellow board members have for item 11, any items for consideration for future meetings? None? Okay. Closed session. I resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Salas? Mary Ann? Got to take off mute.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
That concludes our live streaming of tonight's board meeting. Thank you for joining us. Again, if you have any questions about student meals, please contact Ms. Metana, and we will continue to communicate regularly from Dr. Freitas and myself on updates with COVID-19 and the end-of-the-year events. With that being said, thank you very much for joining.